Presentation, the good job Charlie did. Lord, I pray you help us to digest that, think on it, Lord, not make an impulsive decision or something even that we want, but think of what's best for the city of St. Mary's, Lord, and to act accordingly. Lord, I pray our judgments would be right and true tonight. Lord, I pray that everything that's said and done would be orderly. And, Lord, at the end of this day, that you'd be magnified and glorified. And please watch over this session tonight and let us have a good meeting. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am clerk, can we have our roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Jones, post one.
I'm here.
Councilman Connor, post two.
I'm here.
Councilman Ingram, post three.
Here.
Councilman Nessemento, post four.
Here.
Councilman Rassie, post five.
President.
Councilman Keane, post six. Mayor Lockhart.
I'm here, ma'am.
Sir, we have a quorum.
Yes, ma'am. And for the record, a unanimous vote tonight will be five.
Yes, sir.
Our first item in business is the approval of our minutes from our October 20th City Council meeting. Entertain a motion.
So moves.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ingram and a second by Mr. Connor. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Okay. First item is a presentation I have here. I'll read it out first and then I'll come down and present it. I believe we have some representatives in the audience. Unfortunately, because of the scheduling, it's a day late, but not a dollar short. So proclamation by the mayor of the city of St. Mary's, Georgia, Retired Educators Day. Whereas education is the cornerstone of our society and educators play a vital role in shaping the minds and futures of our children, and whereas retired educators have dedicated their lives to teaching, inspiring, and nurturing generations of students, leaving an indelible mark on their communities, and whereas there are more than 145,000 retired educators in Georgia, 33,000 plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association, and whereas the wisdom and experience of retired educators continue to serve as invaluable resources, enriching our communities through mentorship, volunteerism, and lifelong learning, and whereas it is essential to honor, celebrate, and designate a day for citizens to express their gratitude for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of society. Now therefore, I, Gregory Lockhart, Mayor of St. Mary's, do hereby proclaim November 2nd, 2025, as Retired Educators Day. I encourage all citizens to recognize and celebrate the profound impact retired educators have made in our lives and to express our gratitude for the unwavering commitment to education. There we go. I know I, for one, was responsible for sending a few educators to their early retirement. So.
Not surprised on that one.
Okay. We also have an announcement of our board appointment for the new board Tax Allocation District Number Three Advisory Board. We have one seat available there. And the board appointment due to term expiration to the Camden County Board of Education Sex Education Instructional Review Committee. So if you have interest in one of those positions, you'd like to consider serving in that capacity, please see Ms. Walker Reed for an application. I'd like to kind of jump outside of the agenda for just one second here. It's a few things before everyone scatters off, so I don't want to save it to the end of the meeting. There's a few things I'd like to talk about and bring your attention to. First is to remind everyone that coming up on November the 7th, so this Friday, we have the Christmas Open House in downtown St. Mary's. So town's going to be alive down there. A lot of the businesses are open. We encourage you to come out and start your early Christmas shopping now that we've gotten past at least Halloween. So also to follow, the following Friday will be our next Live After Five. We've had just tremendous response and a great time had by all that come down, so I encourage you to come participate in that. One of the other things that is coming up, I believe it's in early December, maybe December the 2nd, is the annual white lighting ceremony that we have, and we progress through town as we light the streets and the blocks. And we had this year in our budget some funding to light some of the trees in the median, professionally done with wrapped lights, similar to what you see, the two oak trees there at the corner of Weed Street and at Osborne. So down the median, we're going to have additional trees that will be professionally lit that way. But the folks that were putting that together, that ramrodded that, the Downtown Development Authority and Ms. Cheryl Carter and those, they had a much bigger wish list for trees than we can maybe afford this first year. But they have secured two donations to this point totaling $10,000 from private donors to wrap some additional trees. And so I wanted to go ahead and put that out there and also let the public know if you, this is something that you would be interested in doing, to try to get the trees out of the middle of the street, on the sides of the street, or into the park, lit with the warm white lights, you know, that we would encourage you to seek out the DDA and make that donation, encourage you to do so. And the last thing I wanted to bring up right now was our food drive that we have going on in response to this dire time our country's going through in our community. We have neighbors helping neighbors food drive. We have drop-off locations here at City Hall, at the Welcome Center down. We have the St. Mary's Library, the Dandy Street Fire Station, and the police station on Point Peter Drive there, and also out at Launch Printing. And we had several people come in today with some nice donations at the print shop. So I encourage you to take part in that. That food, we'll not be distributing the food directly. We'll be taking it out to food pantries and letting them do that. That's kind of their, they know how to manage that process, that part of it. We're just here to collect the food. And if you have donations, financial donations you want to do, I would suggest that you do that directly to those organizations. We're collecting food and staple goods, those kinds of things, and encourage you to participate. I hear that City of Kingsland has now taken this up, and we certainly want to beat out the City of Kingsland. All right. I'll jump back in now to our report of authorities and boards, and we have our finance report. Looks like Ms. Margaret's going to come up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You will find in your packet, oh, maybe. So. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You'll find in your council packet the finance report for the period ending in September the 30th, 2025, which is the third month of the fiscal year FY '26. Do you have any questions? Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Masser. All right. Our next item is our St. Mary's Convention and Visitor Bureau Authority Annual Report. And we have Ms. Darlene Landreth, who's the chair, and Ms. Angela Wigger, our tourism director. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening to Mayor and our Council. Just let me say, it's been my pleasure this year to serve as the chair for our Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have a great team on our board, including Council Rassie, who's our representative. We also have present this evening Ms. Judy Thurner. The CBB has had a great year, and I'd also like to mention, you mentioned earlier about Main Street, DDA. We have a great collaboration with the Main Street, with our Visitors Bureau. We have a common goal of getting many people in to visit our city, and we have been doing that a great job together with Angela and Candace and Nicole. Our success obviously hinges on our executive director, Angela Wigger, and her staff. Angela's dedication to us here is not just local. We attended a governor's conference in September, and Angela is well-known in her experiences, her dedication, all across the state. And one thing I'd like to do is mention, this is the most current Georgia Trend 500, Most Influential Leaders, and in the section that is represented for our hospitality and tourism, our own Ms. Angela Wigger is part of that recognition. So congratulations. So I'd like to turn over a presentation of our report to Angela right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
All right. So you've got your packet there, and I've given one out to the public as well, so they can follow along if they cared to. One of you may have a copy that has some notes on it. If so, I apologize. Nothing major, but I think I maybe was doodling. But we are the Destination Management Organization or Economic Development Organization for Tourism for the city. Our mission is to promote, to increase bed nights and income that is spent when guests are here, and also to help foster a better quality of experience when guests are here. So those are the three things that we are trying to do, and when we do something, we're looking to see if those meet our mission. We are funded through bed tax, both the City of St. Mary's bed tax, which we are fortunate enough to get 100% of our bed tax, which is 6%. Being a smaller community of really only 250 hotel rooms, getting that 100% bed tax is really necessary for us to be able to do the promotions and the, open a welcome center and run that. So we're fortunate in that respect. We also get a third, about a third of the tax from the county bed tax. They have recently gone up to a 5% bed tax for their fees, and we do split that with the Chamber and the Kingsland CBB as well. And as three offices, we will try and partner up when there's an opportunity to do so. And it may be through joint marketing efforts, or it may be through bringing some travel writers in that we are both spending time with, but we do try to do that. So the demographics that I've got here, these are really Georgia coast demographics. We don't really have anything that just shows St. Mary's or just shows the county, but this is pretty typical for St. Mary's as well. So outdoor history enthusiasts, both of those are going to be the two main sectors that want to come to the coast and also to St. Mary's. We've always been about 50/50 split between men and women, and we're getting to be a little bit higher on the coast where it's 52% men. And the age group is going down a little bit. We've always been kind of in that 45, really 55 to 64 age group, and that number is going down some. The median age is 35 up to 64, and it's pretty evenly split, 30% in each of those and 26 in the higher age category. Certainly for St. Mary's, we're probably a little bit higher percentage in that 55 to 64. 69% of people who come to the coast and St. Mary's drive. So drive markets are important to us. I've listed our key drive markets down there at the bottom of the page for you. South Carolina, North Carolina, Georgia, a lot of Alabama now, that's increasing, and Tennessee's increasing as well. So anything that's an easy drive, like six to eight hours, is a good market for us, and that's typically where we are doing our promotions. The bed tax numbers, there's a little chart for you, so you can see that in 2025, we were at just over 270,000. I think we were trying to get to 300,000 and trying to do that again this year. Having the shutdown in October, which is normally our biggest month, is probably certainly going to affect that, but that is our history there. As far as accomplishments and responsibilities initiatives, we plan quite a few events. Last year, we planned with some other offices, the Mardi Gras Party in the Park, the Illuminated Parade. We do the Music in the Park events. We do a National Trails Day every year, try out the route for the St. Mary's Tabby Trail, watermelon eating and seed spitting contest at the Fourth of July. And I think we should see more people in this crowd participating with that next year. It was really a lot of fun, and if you don't participate, at least come watch that. It really was a lot of fun. We try to do a lot of small business events. One of them this year will be a Mary Makers Market on Small Business Saturday, just to try and help get small people downtown. We do a lot of marketing with the state, so on their website, at the visitor centers, the different state visitor centers. We are voting precinct for the Camden County Board of Elections, and just as a reminder, tomorrow is voting day. Our statistics for the Welcome Center, I listed at the bottom of that page. And then we do have 171 published results this year through earned media or free media, and the total impressions of those free pickups are $34 billion, I'm sorry, $34 billion impressions and $315 million if we were to have paid for those free pickups. And then I did list some of the accolades we've got on the back, some of the things that we have gotten picked up on, 10 Fourth of July parades that prove no one celebrates like a small town, seven nicest small towns in Georgia, 28 small towns, 50 best Christmas events. So you get the idea. We do promote small-town, outdoor, relaxing. We've got calmcations is a new word, calmcation instead of vacation, and apparently we're a good spot for that. We got it picked up, two articles that call us that. And then I think that the last thing I would leave you with is something that does surprise a lot of people when I mention it, and that's that on an average day in Camden County, over $480,000 is spent on tourism-related expenses. Visitors generated $16.6 million in state and local tax revenues, and that has saved each and every household in Camden County $788. If we did not have them spending that money, each of us would have to replace that money within our tax bills. So any questions from Council?
Thank you.
Do you have one question?
Yes, sir.
Looking at the statistics, what was the cause? Do we have an idea of the outlier in fiscal year 2022 of the 12,000 visits to the Welcome Center compared to, it was kind of a higher number than the seven or eight typical?
Not 100% positive, but I believe that may have been maybe some elections, a number of different elections that we had, along with several different groups that we had come in. I'd have to pull our sheets to check that. Normally, I would have that square in my head before you asked that, but I'm not sure what that was.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And that brings us to our report of our city man.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. As most of you know, the demolition of the old Smoot and Pond, which has been a hot topic for a long period of time, has finally taken, started. We've received that final disposition certification to close out the Lurd Asbestos Abatement Project. Public Works crews have begun the process of demolition, and they're using this as an opportunity to train some of our folks in the heavy equipment. They're learning to use the bulldozers, front end loser, and things of that nature, and in their jobs, that's real important. So we're taking advantage of this situation. The right-of-way mowing, the city's mowing crew completed the cleaning of sidewalks and culverts in the new Point Peter area, the Palmetto Street area, the Douglas Drive area, and the Crooked River subdivision area. Our ditch crew, one, has finished cleaning and mowing the ditches around Point Peter Road and Wrinding Road. After completing Wrinding Road, both crews mowed and graded the canal that runs around Crooked River Plantation. Both crews are currently working to excavating the old pool and training existing staff to become better, become future heavy equipment operators. Our Yara Place drainage project, the city attorney has recorded easements, and the Public Works Department is working on contracting for removal of the trees. Public Works will also be coordinating with the residents along each side of the easement area to get that project done. The Palmetto Street drainage, the Public Works Department is working to obtain the survey and legal descriptions needed to submit to the city attorney to draft the easement agreement for the property in order to sign. The Corrane Road, Wrinding Road, Roundabout, the engineering contract was approved at the October 27th Kingsland City Council meeting, and notice award is being issued. I'm sorry, I actually put that in your notes twice. So the Lamig Projects FY '25 and the F-25 supplement are being prepared to send out for construction bids. The Lamig 26 projects are being developed to submit to City Council for approval prior to submittal to GDOT. The street sweeper, the new street sweeper, delivery date is ahead of schedule and is being reported as arriving to us before Thanksgiving. The original delivery date was the end of January, first part of February. This new street sweeper will not require a CDL to operate, therefore will allow new employees to be trained in the operation and the use of equipment. If you remember, we've had one guy that was able to drive it. So that's a huge plus. Our hazard mitigation grant for generators, all three generator projects have been advertised for a second time and no bids were received again. According to generator, we are experiencing the same type of struggles with generator bids. After discussions on how best to proceed, Gina said that we could move forward without having to re-advertize for bids as long as we followed our purchasing policy. Therefore, we will be exploring existing state contracts and/or cooperative purchasing agreements available to us. Generator manufacturers, vendors, and contractors are being solicited to provide proposals for the respective projects. The sanitary sewer hydraulic model. Walcott continues to work on calibrating the hydraulic model of the major sections of the sewer collection system and many development scenarios to determine where our F sewer collection system improvements are needed. It is anticipated that the outcome of this analysis will help narrow down the best direction for Walcott to develop the recommendations to the city in order to prioritize any necessary improvements, that is in relation to our moratorium. Excuse me. They can get you down, John. Our tag-two relief grant, between now and the end of the year, there will be a lot of work performed involving removal, planning, and tree giveaway event within a portion of the city which is identified as a CEJST, which is Climate and Economic Justice Screening Tool area. As a part of these projects, there will be 50 dead or deceased trees removed from city properties, 94 trees planted, and a 200-tree giveaway event by the Tree Board. The tree giveaway is restricted to city residents that live within these areas designated by the CEJST boundaries and will require additional information, such as proof of planning and the future monitoring by the Tree Board. A sketch of the CEJST area is below for clearer and more detailed map will be produced for publication on the city's website. FYI, the upcoming supermoon will create above-normal tide levels this week, beginning with the Atlantic coast on Tuesday morning and then extending to the St. John's Rivers Basin during mid-to-late portions of the week. Mostly minor nuisance-type flooding is expected around times of high tide with impacts of low-lying areas, docks, and boat ramps. A high rip current risk is expected on Tuesday at the northeast Florida beaches. I've included the tide charts there for you of the ones that we're anticipating. Because of the height, it's going to get into the streets down at the waterfront, folks. Okay? Please do not go down to look at it. If you do, do not drive through it. If you are caught driving through, the waters, one of our local farmers will pull you over and have a discussion with you, especially about the effects of how that'll affect your automobiles driving in saltwater. That's not rainwater, folks. Okay? So you beamed to the punch on the food drive off. Thank you for that. And that concludes unless you have any other questions, folks.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Thank you. All right. It brings us to the setting of our consent agenda. So we will go down the items here in our, we have no old business under new business. Item A, agreement stormwater utility update for Goodwin Mills in K-wood. Consent. Item B, Public Works Department, new personnel position. Consent. Item C, request for proposals regarding 102 West St. Mary's Street Summary Museum for Adaptive Reuse. Consent. Item D, contract and new lease copy machine for planning code enforcement and building departments from Golden Isles Office Equipment. Consent. Item E, Budget Ordinance Amendment, fiscal year 2026 General Fund for New City Hall Projects. Item F, Budget Ordinance Amendment by fiscal year 2026 General Fund Potential Internal Revenue Service Settlement Regarding Camden County Public Service Authority. Consent. Item G, Contract Arborist Consulting Services with Tree Workshops Limited, Georgia Forestry Commission Trees Across Georgia Grant Program. Consent. Item H, Resolution for Temporary Street Closure on a portion of East Weed Street, which allows access to previous Weed Street wastewater treatment plant. Consent. And item I, Benoy S. Julian Premium Cigar LLC DBA Golden Leaf Lounge New Alcohol License. Consent.
Discuss.
Okay. Okay. So for the consent agenda, I have items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. So with that, we will now have our granting audience to the public. So if you have anything you'd like to talk to us about these items or other, please come forward, give us your name and address, and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less, please.
Tom Turncanning, 410 Point Peter Place. I ask you to go back to the agenda on your consent items and discuss E, F, and H. And in particular, F, if you can explain, does that have anything to do with the mysterious lien that you determined? But anyway, if you would please add E, F, and H to your discuss items, because right now you've got them all consent. As Angela already mentioned, Tuesday, tomorrow is the election day for the Public Service Commission. And just to let you know, up till now, early voting, we have a whopping 6% voter turnout in Camden County. 6%. Right. And I'm not going to spend any time, but Public Service Commission, they're the ones that determine what you're, where you invest your money in power generation, power cost, telephone communications, et cetera, et cetera. So they do affect our pocketbook. I would like, you mentioned something about the street sweeper. In the past, when, years ago, the street sweeper you had used to go through virtually all neighborhoods. Then the policy was changed, and you only went to areas where they had curbs. If you could discuss at some time or another what areas your street sweeper would go to in places like causeway or bridges and whatever, the street sweeper would never go, you know, on the current policy, and there's a lot of trash here. So what are your limits in using the street sweeper? I know it's unusual for you to hear this from me, but I do have a positive comment. Really impressive credentials for the new employees at the aquatic center. I don't know that you had anything to do with it. They brought the credentials, but you happened to hire them, so I guess you can take a bow on that. Let's hope they're going to make a big difference. They did rock me back in my chair when they started mentioning something about cost savings and even I heard the cost neutral.
and even I heard of the cost-neutral operation at the Aquatic Center. I'll tell you what, we ought to have a parade if you can do that, okay? All right. I would like to mention about the, all right, break even or getting closer, it's a lot better than where we are today, and that's certainly a worthwhile goal. And on your survey, I think we all heard loud and clear, the operative word on the survey results is "more." No surprise there. Charlie, your review has made me dizzy. There were so many great ideas there, whether or not they really can come to pass and that will be a feat of magic if you do make it. But I would like to, I'd like to emphasize, especially with your new leadership you've got there, we really need to take a hard look at the loss leaders. I don't have the current information from this last year. We'll stop doing research on the Aquatic Center, but if memory serves at one time or another, food service was a loss leader. Labor cost, food cost, waste, all of those things. If you spent $100, you only made $70, or whatever the numbers were. And I would ask you to take a hard look at that and take a hard look at the availability of vendors to take that part over. I know you had vendors out there, but then you had traffic in and out. Think about the vendors maybe even using your facility and providing the services and labor. Take the full burden of that off of you. But we need to cut the loss leaders, whatever they are, in providing food at a cost that's less than what we actually pay for. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We're already doing that with Aquatic Center entry fee. All right, and all these wonderful ideas, there's got to be a five-year plan. There's got to be a five- or 10-year plan. You've got to have some kind of vision, long-term commitment, this is where we're going. And we just haven't had that. We really haven't, and I think you know that. Nothing I've read anywhere online has to say a municipal aquatic center or a park or swimming pool breaks even. They all pull out of the general fund, different percentages. I think you guys need to really cap that and say, all right, we expect based on next year's revenue to get in X amount of money, all right? And we will provide up to 30% out of the general fund over that. So if you can take in $1,000, take in $700, put in 300 out of general fund, you got $1,000 for your year's budget, just to use the numbers. But there's-
Your time, sir.
My time? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll talk more.
Ms. Dever, while he's coming up to the podium, online, they're saying that it's the audio's distorted. Do you have that on your end, or? It's showing, okay, okay.
Could be just us.
Maybe.
Larry White, 102 Silvius Court. Item A, I know you consented that for the stormwater utility update. It's been a while since I've heard anything mentioned about the stormwater utility. I would like to see the city council do something about this, okay? We've been talking about this for years, and it's too bad that one person is not up there in a DS anymore. He's already gone. He was the one that pushed it, all right? So he needed to start pushing it again and do something about it and get it utilized and get definitions done, what the citizens are going to pay for it. I don't mind paying for it if it does a good job and does what it's supposed to do. So let's do that, okay? On good note, I'm not used to saying good things about the city. But Public Works, I think I mentioned it, one last city council meeting, I can't remember which one, about cleaning the ditches on Mickle Drive. And they came out there not too long ago and cleaned them all out. They did, and I think the Public Service did a good job on that. Let's talk about this liquor license. All right. Do you realize that in that shopping center, there's already four places that sell liquor there on premises? Do I need to name them? Do you all know what they are? You all should know what they are. So they also serve food. The one place, and I don't know if it's legal or not, if you can deny this liquor license for without food, you'd have to talk to your city attorney to see, but I don't think we need another place to, for people to go and do two unhealthy things, smoke cigars and drink liquor. In my mind, that's too unhealthy. Plus the fact, if you look at the shopping center, there's only one Safeway in and out of that shop, well, out of that shopping center. That's where the traffic light is at. And I've seen too many people coming out the other exits and just barely getting hit. And if I'm not mistaken, in the last two weeks, there was an accident there that happened because somebody coming out of the one-side streets from the shopping center. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
First, I want to thank the city, Public Works, the police, for the support for the Alzheimer's Walk. Thank you so much. With respect to the Aquatic Center, I have from an extremely reputable source that similar-sized cities in Georgia, recreation budgets are in the neighborhood of $2.5 million. That's not what ours is. It's been noted also that at the Aquatic Center, many, many of the cars that are there are out of state now, understanding that we have a community that has military in it and they're allowed to have, keep their license plates from their home states. The fact of the matter is, a lot of the folks that are at the Aquatic Center are out of state. Has any thought been given to having a separate fee for residents and raising the out-of-state fees? It's just a thought, looking for ways to make money.
Steve Hahn, 102 Tatnall. Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Horton, Charles, Mr. Blackerby. I want to be speaking to you as the Chair of Development Authority as well as your PSA representative for St. Mary's. First of all, thank you for consenting item H right there. I know Tom had some problem with it, but we finished Phase 1 over at the Weed Street project, and there were still some risk management issues that needed to be taken care of. And thank you to Bobby Maher for helping us out there. Bobby, I appreciate, we've eliminated all of the risk management issues before we go to Phase 2 with one exception, and that was the ability to put a gate up and prevent individuals from driving back there to the tank and to the waterfront and the area right there. Seemed to be a gathering spot for some of our youth that could hide very appropriately there with some beverages. So I would like to thank you for letting us go forward with that and putting up a gate to prevent that. Secondly, I wanted to thank Charlie for doing a great job. As you know, I was in recreation for 25 years. Actually, my first job in recreation was aquatics. And for all those listening, the NRPA, which is the national organization that kind of runs recreation all over the country, aquatics is the most expensive of the nine areas that they cover of all of them. It's extremely expensive, but yet it's also the one item that is demanded and wanted by almost every community in large numbers. It is, if you go through the different sports, activities, putt-putt, bowling, racquetball, they've all kind of faded away. Almost 70% of the outlets of those different activities are gone. And it's for one reason, they offered one thing. What is now successful in our area is activities that offer many things. If you have a bowling alley, you also want to put together video games and restaurants and other activities, outdoor dining and that. Same thing with putt-putt. There's one, I think, in Fernadina, but they're successful because they offer video games, they sell pizza, they sell beer, they have other little games inside and a place for the kids' playground to play. So I think Charlie has done a good job at taking those items and making that as a destination, just not to use some of the water activities, but also to come as a family and maybe have lunch, play volleyball and other things that he put together there, which is the secret to success of these different projects. And another thing that came up was, we called it revenue neutral. 82% of all city-county recreation, their goal is revenue neutral, which means all costs, with the exception of the city employees or staff, is covered by the revenue that comes in from that individual location right there. And I think what Charlie has put together is very, very on-tune with what is needed to make that as a revenue-neutral site. By being in aquatics, the backbone of aquatic centers is a 25-meter, eight-lane pool. It is used, it can be used for casual swimming, it's used for senior aerobics, it can be used for children's swimming, it can be used by swim teams and evening events where people can go and relax and just swim. And heating it makes it available for all year. The PSA pool is used six days a week. There's two classes of seniors in the morning, there's swim lessons, the swim team comes over and uses it during the day. It has to be multifunctional, and I think Charlie's plan really addresses all of those things that will make it a destination for people to come to swim or to enjoy, you know, St. Mary's and other things they have to offer. So good job, I appreciate it, and thank you, Council, for all your work. Thank you.
Brett Seals, 816 Riverview Drive. I want to dito all what Mr. Han just said. True. By the way, I was listening outside when you guys were doing the, your mic, we couldn't hear anything you were saying when you were speaking, I don't know if your mic or something's I want to talk to, about item number C, request for proposal regarding 102 West Street, St. Mary's for Submarine Museum. I guess I didn't know that thing belonged to, that belongs to the city? So I guess that would be, at some point in time, I guess we can, they're going to try and sell that, do something with it, so as a little bit of revenue coming into, okay, just want to make sure, I'll put it out there. One of the things that, Mr. Massiminto, I remember when you came on board, you had some really good ideas for the midtown area. You had a plan, scale, and everything out. Well, we haven't heard anything since then, you know what I mean? It would be kind of nice to know, are you, you're not pushing them anymore? Because I thought what you were coming up with was good ideas, you know? And, but we don't have anything on it anymore?
Money.
Money?
That's it. If you got it, let's do it.
Oh, there's a guy down there who's buying up downtown St. Mary's. Maybe you need to talk to him, he might can push something up there. But anyway, I want to kind of, the bar thing, I have a problem with that. You know, if you're not serving food, I don't think you should be having a bar. All these juke joint, you know, tipping in and Legion type, Legion's type of thing, if we start to do that, it's going to be falling in here too, and it's going to come. That's all I got to say.
Chris Thonner, 202 West Bryant Street. Earlier this evening, I went into the men's room and was overjoyed. A couple of months ago, I mentioned to Sean Clearwater, one of Bobby Maher's folks, that the motion-activated faucet in the lavatory did not work. I'm not sure Sean believed me, but he said he'd look into it. Well, it's fixed with faucets and handles, the old-fashioned kind. Thank you.
I just need to make aware a quick correction on the printed report that I gave you. I did leave Valerie Fouts on there as a board member, she is no longer a board member, and Mr. Jerry Brumbelow is a valued board member, and I left his name off. So just want to let you know that. We will have a correction posted on our website this week. Thank you.
Ken Johnny, 102 South Broad Street, here in St. Mary's. Mr. Mayor, Council members, gentlemen. So over the past few weeks, I've noticed an awful lot of really good activity in St. Mary's. And even before that, I've noticed a very pleasant environment. Things are happening.
Turn it off.
There you go, you got it on.
So downtown, alive at 5:00, people are enjoying themselves, and there's activity. And certainly, all of you have a big input to making decisions for the city, but I would like to recognize the hidden heroes. And in that context, I'm talking about the individuals that work for the city, work in the city, that are tucked away behind their desks, behind closed doors, people that we don't see every day. Those folks are our hidden heroes. They're tucked away, they're doing a great job, eight hours a day, 10 hours a day, certainly five days a week. Many of them work extra time at home to make sure that things are ready for the next day. Those hidden heroes are here in this building, and they're in other buildings that all belong to the city. So I just want them to know that their hard effort is recognized, not only by me, but by an awful lot of other residents here in St. Mary's, and they're doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, we'll close the granting audience to public session and turn to appro- All right, we'll close the grand audience to public session and turn to approval of the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, a motion to approve the items. That's previous.
Still have one for discussion.
Yeah, we have one for discussion.
Yeah. He's just doing his side.
Well, for Mr. Cannon, I mean, I'll have discussion on F if we, if we can have a discussion on F. So I know we addressed H and Mr. Hon.
Okay, so you want to put...
F, we can discuss that real quick.
F, back on there.
I would like to do, put E and F on there also.
We'll do E and F.
Mayor Lockhart?
Yes, ma'am.
I know we had a motion for what it was, and then did someone second?
No one seconded it.
Okay, so it died for lack of a second, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so revised consent agenda would be item A, B, C, D, G, and H. Have a motion to...
Aye.
I was to discuss.
Discuss.
He's just talking.
Or you want...
Would you repeat that, sir?
So consent agenda now would be item A, B, C, D, G, and H.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Ingram.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nasiminto. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I'll now entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ingram.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so our first item for discussion is item E, Budget Ordinance Amendment, fiscal year 2026, General Fund for City Hall Projects, found under tab F in our books, and... And so this is approval for some of the expenses associated with the redesign. As you recall, our initial bid that was received for the work done on the new city hall was higher than council wanted, and so Mr. Horton has been working alongside our architect, David Amos, to redesign, reduce the scope. And so some of these expenses are associated with that roughly fifty-nine-hundred dollars, just under fifty-nine-hundred dollars as part of that. The rest was for the lights for the senior citizen parking lot that was installed at twelve thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars for a total of eighteen thousand two-eighty-two. And so those expenditures, expenditures which were previously unbudgeted, require a fund equity amendment to our budget, and that's what is before us tonight. So I don't know if...
Motion to approve.
Approve.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the next item is the, sorry, I'm losing my page here, would be the budget amendment. Item F for discussion is, recall, I believe it was maybe two meetings ago, we spoke about, there was an insurance settlement years ago from the PSA, and that money had just been sitting in our general fund. Money's recovered from the insurance company pursuant to the Public Service Authority, and a motion was made to move that money into a itemized fund set aside for, if it should become necessary in the future, to address a lien if that ever happens. And so that's what this is, was just the actual budget action item to make that budget adjustment that's necessary to record that, that change.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Ingram, second by Mr. Connor. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
And our final item for discussion was the alcohol license. And so, I don't know if we have, are the applicants here that would like to speak on behalf of this, or...
No, sir, they're not here.
Not here, okay. So what we have before us is, I assume, an approved application meeting the ordinances of state and city that are on the books. So I don't know if they, well, I guess we probably need to get started with a motion one way or the other. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for Benoa S. Julian Premium Cigar LLC.
I'll second it and start the discussion.
Okay, second by Mr. Ingram. All right, discussion.
Council mayor, I was asked if this was the first bar that we've had in St. Mary's, because I've been here for a while. And I, we did have a bar, I'm sorry to give you the wrong answer, it wasn't a Bloody Bucket, this was Bill's Place. It was a bar at one time, but other than that, I don't know of any other bar that we've had.
We've had that, like sat there where the auto shop is now, has Osprey Co., where you get on the left there, what was the name of that liquor joint right there?
Has Osprey?
Can you speak up, please?
In the Shore State Hotel, we have a bar, sir.
Shore State?
In the Shore State Hotel.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Without food.
They serve food, though. They're talking about...
No, they're, the food they conserve is not, their liquor doesn't include food. They may have like appetizers, but it's not considered what they, they don't request food on theirs.
Yeah.
Talking about torpedoes.
Anyway, I, I don't want to say the president's having alcohol bars and things throughout the cities, you know, it's, we've been kind of a quiet place for a while, and I just can't see, I understand when people eat, and they have meals and things, they like a little wine, whatever with their food, but to say, just to go there and smoke cigars and drink liquor, I just disapprove of that. Like I said, that's a crowded area. We have a lot of, almost accidents in that area without people drinking. I could see some terrible things happening, and I just don't think we need that in St. Mary's.
I'll say this, I'm a cigar enthusiast. I've been to several, I've been to many cigar lounges, and I've never, ever seen a cigar lounge with food. If one of you guys know of one, please let me know, that'd be nice. We have two lounges in our county. One is Gotti Life in Kingsland. They don't serve alcohol, but it's BYOB. And then we have Tobacco Palace, they just do retail and a lounge, and neither one of them, you know, have, well, I guess one has alcohol, but it's, I guess, bring your own. But I've never been to one, not in the town center, not in River City, that had food with it, and that's just the way it's been, and I don't see that as a detriment. I will say this, as a business owner, if you are going to be a cigar lounge that does not serve alcohol, it's almost, it's not a hundred percent, but it's almost a complete death blow to that business. That significantly helps them be able to make a living, and I don't want to set them up for failure before they even start. Not to mention Belkin Shopping is right that. We want to draw businesses to that downtown area, so guess what? While my wife's going into Belkin, hates the smell of cigars, that is something that the husbands will be dropped off right next door, and they can frequent both businesses and provide business to both merchants. Mr. Blackerby, do you know of any restrictions that would allow a cigar, or would require a cigar lounge to have food if they have alcohol?
No, the ordinance would allow it as long as it meets the general distance requirements, as far as I know it does, as long as the applicant meets the basic ordinance requirements, and as far as I know, the applicant does. So I don't, I don't know of any reason why it would not be allowed under the ordinance.
So if it's not breaking anything, I don't believe it's the council's job to police health, whether someone wants a cigar lounge or doesn't like alcohol, or whatever the reason is, you know, if they're meeting all the requirements, I believe it's our job to just make sure of that, and so on and so forth. So I don't want to set a business up for failure, and as far as I know, this would be the first and only cigar lounge that does have alcohol in town, so.
So, Mr. Blackerby, I just wanted to clarify, I guess, this is a ordinance that's obviously state ordinance, but also within the city's current ordinances. If there was to be a desire by council not to entertain these types of things, is that something that could be changed within our own city ordinances to allow these types of establishments?
We could certainly amend the ordinance to, I mean, we have a category of license right now that is specifically for selling alcohol without food for consumption on the premises, which this falls within those requirements, it meets the requirements. If council is concerned about this, I would recommend considering an ordinance amendment, but I would not, I would not deny this application based on some potential future amendment, because it does meet, as far as I'm aware, I mean, I didn't go out personally, measure the distances, but as far as I know, it meets the distance requirements.
Yes.
So I would not recommend disapproving it under the current ordinance.
Stephen, I appreciate that, because that was going to be my next question.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Nasiminto, a second by Mr. Ingram. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So we have Mr. Jones as a nay?
Yes, sir.
And the motion passes four to one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that brings us to the announcement of our calendar, ma'am.
On Wednesday, November fifth, in the Main Street Office, Development Authority of St. Mary's meeting. On Thursday, November sixth, at two o'clock PM, in the Planning and Building Conference Room, Tree Board Meeting. On Friday, November the seventh, here in Council Chamber, St. Mary's Municipal Court, Plague and Arraignment. On Monday, November the tenth, eight-thirty AM in Main Street, the Downtown Development Authority Meeting. On Tuesday, November the eleventh, St. Mary's City Buildings will be closed, and the Planning Commission has rescheduled their five-thirty PM meeting to Thursday, November the thirteenth. On Tuesday, November the twelfth, at two o'clock PM, they'll have a lead service project invitation to bid here in Council Chambers. On Thursday, November the thirteenth, at nine-thirty AM in Main Street, the Orange Hall Management Committee Meeting, followed by the five o'clock PM, St. Mary's Intercoastal Gateway Meeting in Main Street, and again, the five-thirty PM Planning Commission Meeting will be held there in Council Chambers. And on Monday, November the seventeenth, at six o'clock, the next city council meeting, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, council member comments?
I'd like to kind of echo what Mr. Jolly said about the hidden heroes, the employees that we have. We have, we have a lot of great employees in the city of St. Mary's, and they do a tremendous job. I also think, would like to give a shout out to the board members. We have several different boards, and they really do their homework and let us know what we should do and how we should do it. And also, the groups that patrol the trash in the medium and along the highway, these people, they don't get any recognition, and I think they do a fantastic job. And it, it really bothers me to see, as soon as they do a massive clean out and have everything looking great, somebody will throw a bag of trash out. I mean, you know, it's, I can understand if it's a cigarette butt or something small, but, you know, I, I just wish that we could patrol the area and do a better job at trying to get these people, because a beer can thrown out of the window is, is trash.
Yeah. Similar to what Mr. Jones has said, some of our unsung heroes, if any of you, any of you were at the Scarecrow Stroll, I had the honor and the privilege of getting to sit with Mr. Alan Rassie and the mayor and hand out candy, and the unsung hero was Dusty the Clown. I don't know if you saw Dusty the Clown? And even after his transformation, he comes in transformed yet again, so bravo to our city manager, who I thought that was his strength, but apparently Dusty the Clown is his greatest superpower, so great job on that. I do want to say one thing about the Aquatic Center. This is, this is what I'm going to do, I'll just, I'll just tell you. So there's three things I'd like to do for myself personally, and I'm sure this will be an ongoing discussion. Number one, I've told you all before, I'm not going to go back into it, but I'm, I'm an all-in or all-out person with the Aquatic Center. I think we should take option three and do an outright sale, or option four for the hybrid that lease to own that Mr. Charlie Williams brought up. Or, I love his plan of expanding it and making it as close to revenue-neutral as we can. So in order to do that, there's three things I want to do. I want to hear from the public, so I plan on going through all those surveys and just seeing what people are saying, to see if maybe their, their thoughts and desires are in line with ours. And then I want to hear from Bella, and I think her assistant's name was Laura, was it Laura, is that right?
Yeah.
And I want to speak to them personally, and just see, I mean, this is what they went to school for, so I want to hear from them and see some of their ideas. And then I'd love to continue this discussion. I'd like to have another work session, I'd like to speak to Mr. Charlie some more about this, and, and really just get on the same page now, not later, not when the season starts, because as we pointed out, halfway through those repairs, there's some that are going to need to be repaired anyways, but depending on what we choose to do, like if we're going to sell the Aquatic Center, I don't think we need to go all out and put two slides and so on and so forth, we just need to make the repairs necessary. However, if we're choosing the route of expansion and really making, as Mr. Hon put it, a destination for St. Mary's, I'm forever looking for, Bert Seals brought up the Midtown Revitalization Project. You know, I had a real big vision for Midtown, just like I'd love to see the Aquatic Center, if that's the route council chooses to go, be a destination where we're drawing people from both north and south, and a heated lagoon in a beach access where we really don't have a beach is a huge draw, things like that, things being able to use like the paddle boats, or having the golf there, or an arcade. One of the things I saw just quickly as I went through those surveys was arcade. You know, we're always saying something for young people to do. Something that we can use year-round is a huge draw, and we can charge accordingly. And if that's true, about seventy percent, which I was, I staggered at that, could, of those projects could be done with grants and stuff, I'd really be interested in hearing for that. So I really want to be proactive about it. Those are the three steps I, I'm going to take as a council member, just to find out more and make the best decision possible, and I would encourage council to do the same so we get ahead of it and really decide the direction we want to go with the Aquatic Center. Thank you guys so much.
Can, can I piggyback on what you said?
Sure.
I agree with you, but I think that we should keep everything in-house. I mean, that's me personally.
Yeah.
And Mr. Smith, you know, this is the second time you said it, nobody seemed to pay any attention. For a city our size, we should be paying about two and a half million dollars toward recreation. And recreation, it should be revenue-neutral, but you know, our police department, our fire department, none of these other programs that assist and help the city is not revenue-neutral. You have to do what's good for the citizens of St. Mary's. And I think that the more recreation we have, the less problem that we're going to have with juveniles on the street, crime and everything else. So, you know, you can either pay now or pay later.
Right.
Yeah, I'll echo the sentiment that, you know, our city employees do do a great job. They're the heartbeat of the city, and that's what makes this place go. I know that they put in a lot of hard work and hours, and, you know, I know we're all very appreciative, and sometimes you don't get enough credit for what you do, so thank you. You know, I'm going to agree with Councilman Jones, and I do like the idea of the Aquatic Center in-house, keeping it, you know, within the city, because we saw what happened when it was, you know, in, you know, just, just a small arm-length transaction away, where it did get kind of a lot of deferred maintenance, we inherited it with, you know, the issues that it's having now, and we're on the cusp of getting past those. We had the discussion that we're on the cusp of getting past those to where, you know, besides the general maintenance, that we should be, you know, a little bit better path to getting it closer to revenue-neutral. to getting it closer to revenue neutral.
Yeah.
That would, you know, be a big go. But, you know, like the recreation budget was discussed, citizens do expect some type of recreation for their tax dollars, and we don't have much right now. And there are other areas that are recreational just for leisure, our waterfront park that makes $0 for the city, just the waterfront park to walk around, but it's maintenance-maintained, and the budget for that doesn't get crucified as much as the Aquatic Center that we do spend a little bit of money on. And, you know, it is all part of a recreation. Robbie, do you like your, you know, fresh look? You changed it up, and I like that, and I did not, you know, just... This took a distraction from your beautiful tie you're wearing. I didn't make comment on your tie. You know, I do like that. For everybody, you know, that did watch the game, it absolutely was not a catch and go dogs. So.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to mention a couple of things. I'd like to thank Charlie for putting together a great presentation to us, and I'm excited about our staff for the Aquatic Center, and having them here is a positive sign for our future. And I echo what all other council members said about the Aquatic Center because this is an investment. And we got incredible people here to run the facility, and I would like to see... My heart says let's go for it. But it takes teamwork, and you put it together, all of you guys have, and I thank you for that because when I got in on council eight years ago, it was a mess, and it's gotten extremely better with the help of our city staff. And the other thing is that I have one thing that bothers me right now, one thing. That stinking clock doesn't work right.
It's an hour behind.
Yeah, what did you fix that? But anyways, one of the things is that I want to share with you is the Thanksgiving Food Drive is taking place this week, and this involves the whole school system, not just one school, the whole school system. And with the base issues, the closures and all that stuff going on, the school system has more than stepped up their game, and they're taking staff off other jobs and helping us get all the food collected on Thursday to help feed 150 families. Now, the Salvation Army has done an incredible job of orchestrating this effort, and feeding 150 families is not a small task, it's a big task. And there's going to be two pantries in Camden County. They're going to be extremely blessed by the bounty that's coming in. And I just want to keep encouraging people to give, and it's that time of year where we need to do that. So I appreciate everyone. I appreciate our incredible council, and God bless you.
I want to piggyback on what Alan said just a minute. Alan and I both are in Kiwanis, and Greg's in Kiwanis as well, and we're working pretty hard trying to feed 150 people. And we're going to be working Thursday with our bags, Friday with the bags too, if we hadn't got everything done, and then Saturday, we're delivering all the 150 meals to the families. So we'll be in our cars all day Saturday, delivering meals, which I think is a great thing for our community. We have got a great community, y'all. This is a great place to live.
Yeah.
St. Mary's, Georgia, you know, I think it's the best place to live by far. It's just a great place. And thank y'all for the people that come in and speak and give us the two cents that you want to say. That means a lot to me because I want to hear what y'all have got to say, and try to my best to be able to help in any way possible. But let's have a great afternoon and a great week, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you, y'all. The one thing I wanted to add to my earlier comments was one of the other Christmas things that's coming up soon is the Camden House Tinsel Trail, which is our Christmas trees in the St. Mary's Waterfront Park, and those trees will be delivered to us. Public Works does a great effort to help us get the trees put up and electricity run to those, and that, believe, happens on, I think it's November, I mean, December the 9th, I believe, is maybe the day, somewhere around in there. But that's following Saturday, which I think is the 13th, is the actual lighting ceremony. But I know we have 55 trees currently ordered, and, you know, we're looking for organizations, families, family reunion groups, businesses that would like to purchase and decorate a tree. It's a really special thing to go down there at night and see all the different trees decorated, and, you know, I've been involved with Camden House now for about 10 years on their board, and Candace Pullum from our DDA is also on the board with me, and so she and I, either one of us from the city can help you if you're interested in participating with the Tinsel Trail and decorating a tree, and we'd love to have your participation in that and helping that very needed organization that we have in our community. But, and I'm not going to spoil the surprise, but there's something great coming for Public Works trucks for Christmas this year.
Oh, ho, ho.
But there is a group of volunteers in addition to the city workers. As I say, this morning, you know, bright and early, just after 7:00 probably, they were out in the median already collecting the leftover hay bundles and cleaning up the medians from our Scarecrow Stroll and putting out the Christmas lights already on some of the poles you can see around town, and going to be doing a great effort. But there's a group of volunteers, a group of ladies, probably have put in 200 hours already, fluffing garland and fluffing wreaths and putting new warm lights on wreaths and things, and I hope to recognize them specifically at a future meeting or whatever, but, you know, they care a lot about how our town looks and presents and, you know, and how our town's going to look for Christmas, and I think it's going to be a really special year this year, and I hope everybody will enjoy it and participate in all the activities that we have. And so with that, I want to thank them, but, and like I said, I'll thank them more specifically later, but I believe unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, we have an executive session.
Do we have an executive session?
Yes.
We certainly do. So, sorry. Y'all can go home. We got to go into executive session. I have a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ingram and second by Mr. Nascimento. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
See you guys later.
I'm not so sure Public Works is helping us with those trees.